Thank you. At this point in time, you can make your disclosure of pecuniary interest, or at any point in time through the meeting if something should arise. And I'm looking for a motion to confirm the agenda. We are going to add the resolution that was done in closed session to Section 11, Other Business. So we can deal with that today and get this done and over with. So could I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended? Bob Wilhelm, Doug Kellum. Those in favor? That's Carrie. Perfect. Consent agenda. We have items 5.1 to 5.6. We are going to pull 5.2, and Lori's going to give just a quick update on that. Does anyone else want anything pulled? Seeing nothing. Do you want to discuss 5.2 now?
We can do that.
Let's do it quickly. It's not going to take more than a minute.
Right. So 5.2, just so council knows, I should have sent something out when the agenda went out, just indicating that report came last week, and we put it in the consent agenda item, just so you'd know it was coming. And certainly, it would have a report with it. It relates to a request from the township of Perth South on, with regard to the Whalen Line upload of the road. I'm not sure if John wants to speak to it, but there will be a report coming. But today, the purpose of putting it there is so that we gave you a heads up on the background to the information.
Bob?
Just to add to that, currently, Perth South's doing a traffic count on both ends of the Whalen Line to get an idea of what the traffic volumes are.
Great.
All right. Anybody else got any comments? Not trying to push you along, but we do have to do POA fairly shortly, because Linda has a conference call with the ministry. So I have a motion here. The council receives consent agenda items 5.1 to 5.6, and approves the June 4, 2020 council minutes. Moved by you, second by Walter. Those in favor? Those in favor?
Great.
Okay, now we got enough. Okay, we are moving on to public meetings, hearings, and delegations. We don't have anything. So next, we have Linda, POA.
Is she on there?
She's not on yet.
Okay, we maybe will ask her. She's having trouble getting on, so we'll ask her to come down.
Okay.
So she can.
Bring her down.
Yeah, could you go get her?
She's 20 feet away.
Yeah, yeah, but she has a sore leg, right?
Technical glitch here. She must have a Lenovo like I do every once in a while if you want to do it.
I had yesterday last night. Back to back video conferences, and people emailing me, they wanted to press me.
Hello. Good morning, everyone. Had a busy morning. So what do I have to update for you? I've provided you with my report for the month of May. File charges are down once again. Things have been picking up in June, but I can't report on what that looks like until the end of June. So the charges filed are down 57% from the average. And same thing with the revenue. We've done a analysis to show that we still are recovering our costs. And things are moving forward with Minister of Attorney General. We are scheduling telephone resolution meetings for pleas in July, on four court dates in July. So in that way, things are moving forward. I have another teleconference today. I'm hoping for more legislative changes to expand those audio appearances. So we're working with Lori and with Minister Attorney General and everyone to get ourselves up and operating again as soon as we can. Do so safely.
Good. Anybody got any questions for Linda? Not seen any.
No.
Pretty easy. You are available for the shared services meeting.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Just a side piece of information. Small Claims Court is going to fire up the 1st of July, and it's all going to be done virtually.
Okay.
And all the lawyers have to work from home, provide their own security, and everything. And at some point in time, the province might reimburse them. So I know a bunch, I know two of the judges that do small claims, because she asked if we were open here, and I said, nope. You're going to be open by July? Nope. And she's actually declined to continue as a small claims court judge until
Yeah.
she gets more direction from the province, just so you're aware. Anyway, I need a motion. The council receives the POA operational update to County Council and MSSC report for information. Moved by that would be Doug, second by Darrell. Doug I, sorry. Got to keep those in favor? That would be Carrie. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Planning Services. We have.
We should have Marion.
Oh, Sally's down in the corner.
Sorry.
There we go.
Everyone, you okay?
Yep, I can.
Great. Good morning, Mayor, sorry, Warden Aitchison, and members of council. This morning, we're going to North Perth to talk about subdivision application that was actually a given draft approval in 2010. And the property has changed hands. And they did get an extension to carry out all of their conditions back in 2015. And I've been in touch with the owner of the property, who right now is going through a number of the conditions. And so we went through the list the other day and checked off the ones that are done. And there's clear indication that they are working on the rest. And so they need a little bit more time. This subdivision is going to lapse in another month. And they need more time than that. So my recommendation to you today is that they could be given a one-year extension to finish those conditions and get this subdivision registered in Listowel. And since the writing of this report, I did attend the council meeting in North Perth on Monday night, and their council also is making that same recommendation to you through resolution. So that's my report for today, and I'm happy to take questions.
Okay, questions for Sally? Don't see any. So I have a motion here that the council of the Corporation of the County of Perth grant a one-year extension of draft plan approval to the Terrier subdivision file number NP10/01 Park Lot 34, Concession 1, geographic township of Elmo, Victoria Ave, South, Listowel Ward, municipality of North Perth. And that in doing so, the draft approval for this development will lapse on July 15, 2021. Moved by Doug Kellum, second by Todd Casenberg. Those in favor? That's all Carrie. Did you get those robots back and working, Sally?
Yeah, we did. And we are very fortunate to have incredible service people in our community here, because we had service people from five different companies here, and they had everything operational within 24 hours. So really impressive, great service. Yeah.
Good.
Thank you for asking.
Okay, moving on to paramedic services. I see Max muted, but maybe he'll come alive. He's probably spending that extra money we were talking about yesterday.
Good morning, everyone. Morning, Mr. Warden. I hope you can hear me.
Yeah.
First of all, thank you for obviously inviting me to the meeting. I'm not sure if everyone's had a chance to read the report, but basically in terms of call volumes are somewhat lagging still behind. I'm thinking 10 to 12% from the same time last year. So but still, once again, crews are still continuing to wear PPE, and calls are obviously being screened as per the center, as well as the crews also screen the call for co-vote as well. So nothing more to add really particular in that. In terms of our community paramedicine program, as indicated in the report, or actually Donald has done, and he should be taking full credit for this, but I can't get Donald on the phone or on the report today. We've done about 800 co-vote swab tests with the team. That team is winding down a bit. By the middle of July, we're down to two, and then eventually, at the end of August, obviously, August 23, we're going down to one person. Some of the the reason for that is obviously that's, the team really was brought on board under the Ontario Health Team's request, and they're to do some palliative care. Unfortunately, the palliative care side of it didn't work out for a variety of reasons. And we think, we'd like to start the community paramedicine program. You've really got to crawl before you start these programs. And I think something that would do probably five days a week to get your client base up, to continue on with the community paramedicine program is the way to go on it. In terms of the financial side, it's the same spiel that we put in last report, and amazingly enough, just to bring council up to date, everyone that put in for additional cost to the Ministry of Health when they requested it, it was about mid-April, and that was probably in the middle of our pandemic exercise. And we're probably, everyone was very concerned, obviously, about costs that we're running over and stuff. I think the province came back to all the operators and said, listen, your costs are probably 10 times what the funding is, which wasn't really a big surprise. So Cory and I are actually working on that. Yesterday, I sent Cory an update to probably claw back some of those costs that we initially put in. But it's early in the game. I think it has to be in by the end of next week. I'm very confident if we can move some of those costs downward a bit. We've had a good turnout in terms of of capital. We've got the two NOCO machines in our, and we've got a number of staff that two staff, actually, that were off their pregnancies, and they're now going on their maternity leave. So I do feel confident that we're in good shape there. Obviously pleased to take any questions.
Questions for Mac? Not seeing any, Mac. Just that email I sent you yesterday, and you and I talked about it. So is some of that, do we know, is that also covers some of the extra health unit costs?
Well, I seen your email on that, and I quite frankly, have the same issue going on in Elgin County where us, you know, it's rough. I mean, Elgin and Perth are pretty same, but we think that pandemic pay is going to be about 2 and 1/4 on a good day. And obviously, funding was in the 428 number, so and the same, and the same issue happened in Elgin. It was like an extra $200,000 hanging around. So I I'm kind of, I don't have an answer for you on that. And yours, maybe it's health unit, in the county of Elgin, it's probably nursing home money, but it didn't say that in the letter, so I'm trying to get confirmation of it. And I should have an answer later. I'm not sure if I'll have it by Friday or not, but that's why I'm working closely with Cory on it, to sort of say, look at that seems to be an awful lot of money for some reason, so.
Yeah, and my other comment is I was wondering if it also would maybe cover Spruce Lodge as our county facility, because their pandemic pay costs were substantial. They have got some funding through it, but it's not near enough to cover it.
Yeah, I, I, I'm befuddled on it, quite frankly. I and I obviously checked in my friend in Oxford County, and it's sort of the same issue, where it seemed to be a lot more than what we required, and which is unusual. So that's why I suggest maybe that that could be a bonus for me or something, but I noticed you didn't agree to that very, very quickly.
Not off the hot, no.
Thought I'd have fun with you on that one, but I will get an answer, because it's not uncommon to Perth. It looks like others are seeing it. So once again, I'll run it by Cory to be triple sure, but I don't see those costs exceeding much more than $200,000.
When you're talking with Cory or whoever you deal with, can you check to see if that might cover the extra pandemic pay at the Spruce Lodge?
Yeah, and Cory's on there now. I see the, I can't get my video to work in the office. I'm at the ambulance station Perth, and video doesn't come back to this office, or the internet doesn't come this far back. So I'll ask, I'll try to see Cory this afternoon, but as you know, we got a meeting at 1:00, and then I got EOC at at 2:00 as well with City of Stratford.
Cory, any comment on that funding?
The only thing I could add is that potentially, if they extend it past the August deadline for the pandemic pay, they're looking at a one-time funding. So if they extend it, they don't have to issue any more money, because it will be within that envelope, potentially be extending it, the date for the pandemic itself. At the end of the day, actual costs will still go in. So if we're under, then we'll just have to repay back the amount that we haven't spent with relation to pandemic. So I'm thinking they're just, with some foresight, if they extend that past the August date that they've provided.
No chance that could be used for Spruce Lodge?
I'm going to check with Spruce Lodge, as well as the health unit, on to see, because they also receive ministry funding separately as well.
You got stuff, but you're short.
If they received any information with respect to pandemic pay as well.
Okay, yeah, thanks. Okay, no questions or no more comments? I have a motion that Perth County Council receives the Paramedic Services Municipal Shared Services Committee, MSC, MSSC, April 20, 2020, report, and the council approved the report for submission to the June 18 meeting 2020 of the Municipal Shared Services Committee. Moved by that would be Doug I and Todd Casenberg. Those in favor? Carrie. Moving on. Thanks, Mac.
All right, thank you, Mr. Warden. I'll see you at 1:00, I guess, on the shared services.
Hopefully. Okay.
Thank you.
John McLoughlin.
Thank you, Warden Aitchison. Good morning, council. Just first of all, I'd like to provide a little bit of clarification on a couple of things there. I know Lori had sent out an email to council yesterday just indicating a couple of reports that would be coming forward on July 2. And one of them, we had there in the consent agenda today, and just to, so that council is aware, what is exactly coming back on July 2 in a report in regards to the Whalen Line upload? That report will be just specific to the Whalen Line and the Perth South and Middlesex County upload there. So it will be specific to that. It will not include anything as far as a policy procedure in looking at what we will do moving forward as far as uploading roads. That's a more in-depth look and a report. Obviously, that's going to involve just more than Perth South and Middlesex County. That involves all our municipal partners and also our other boundary partners as well. So that will be coming forward at a later date. However, we'll just be dealing with the Whalen Line on July 2 and the request from Perth South. So I can update you on a few things with that. Last weekend, I had a road needs consultant go over the roadway and just give me his opinion with as far as infrastructure and the possible impacts to our asset management plan and our asset inventory as well. You know, we've been certainly in discussions with Perth South and Ken Bettles, the director there. It certainly makes a lot of sense that the counties would have a boundary road agreement rather than a township and a county having a boundary road agreement. And just for your information, we do not currently have any boundary roads with Middlesex County. So we don't have a formal boundary road agreement. We do, however, maintain a portion of their roadway in the wintertime, which we do have an agreement with. And so like with any boundary agreements, it's obviously ideal that you're, you're not really having any cross-border invoicing. That's what you'd like to avoid. It's not always possible. But I think in this case, we can certainly better deal with, deal with this at the county level, perhaps than at the lower level. And as well, there will be a report just updating on the winter modernization project. I do have a video conference this afternoon with the consultants working on that. And just for council's information, on Friday, we received a letter from the ministry extending the deadline for that project, and the final report will need to be to the province now by December 4 of this year. That deadline has moved through, from originally the end of June to September 18, and now is December 4. So we'll be providing a short report, just updating you on that project, where we're at, and, and, and the new deadlines. As well, the email did include some information about our capital roads projects that we have on the go. I'm happy to report that two of them, Perth Line 36, the contractor, Coco Paving, has started work on that. So we have the road all pulverized. It did pulverize up very nicely. We were very pleased. And we're just finishing up plowing in shoulder tile, which is going extremely well. We expect to be recycling the road next week, and then following that, hot mix paving in July. Just so council is aware, that section of roadway is closed at the moment and will remain closed until we complete the construction work. Perth Road 112 at line 29, our county crews are doing some realignment work and some vertical, horizontal and vertical realignment work there, and that's progressing very well. Of course, we've had some great weather to do all this. And so they, they've got the road dug up, granular B down, and we're looking to be capping that roadway with granular A next week. So that's progressing well. At this point in time, we expect probably another week. We do have the road closed because of this work, and we would be opening that up as soon as we're finished. I can report that the last time I've spoken with the recycling contractor, we were scheduled for the middle of July for that particular project. So we'll provide you, keep providing you updates on those projects. Any questions with those updates before I proceed with my report?
Bob?
I'm a little concerned when you, when you say about the Whalen Line being a one-off. I really think that we need to develop a policy on the number of vehicles per day on a, what should be on a county road. And we need to look at all our county roads and see if they qualify, or if we should reassess what is and what is not county, Perth County Road. And I think this is past due, and I'm a little concerned when would we see a policy coming forward?
John?
Yeah, agreed. You know, we should have a policy, but again, I don't really consider this a one-off. Obviously, there's a time deadline associated with this particular road and uploading. And a decision should be made on that. But as far as looking at all our, all our roads within Perth County, as I said, it's a, it's a much larger look. There are greater impacts here, certainly with the asset inventory and the impacts of of what may be uploaded. So there's a great deal to consider. And obviously, traffic counts will play a big part in any procedure that we do come up with. You know, this wasn't part of the 2020 work plan, so we're going to have to make adjustments and get something fitted into the schedule here and get that out to you by 2020.
Other comments or questions? Okay, I got a comment or a question, now that nobody else does. So this realignment of potential savings in winter maintenance is now extended till December the 4th, you said? So that kind of concerns me a bit, because here we are trying to modernize and save money, and the results aren't even going to be, really have to be until prime time winter maintenance season. I'm hoping we can have this done before, so if there could be some alterations made and save some municipalities, either upper tier or lower tier, some money. I'm hoping we might get at this a bit sooner. I realize the deadline's been extended, but, and we're all busy, but crap, the next thing is going to be next March, and it's going to be another full year before it's done. Any comments on that, or am I just blowing smoke? Bob?
I agree. I think that we, just because we have a COVID, that's not an excuse. That sure, it might be inconvenient that you can't meet face to face. You can have Zoom meetings. And as far as I'm concerned, this shouldn't drag on for an extra two or three months. If you want to add an extra 30 days because of the COVID, that's fine, but I can't accept going until December.
So through the, through the ward, and the province has extended it as an opportunity to the end of December. John will work with the consultant, and we will see what we can do in terms of, I know the schedule was already to September. So we'll see what we can do in terms of our timeline. And when John brings that interim report back for an update, we can certainly address the schedule then. Certainly understand council's point.
John, carry on. We got Rannick's speed limit.
Yeah. Thank you, Warden Aitchison. Yeah, more of a housekeeping report, really. There was a petition for a speed limit reduction on Perth Road 163 in the village of Rannick. There is a little picture there within the report, just sort of showing you the area. Rannick's just west of St. Mary's, and it intersects at Perth, it's Perth Road 139 and Perth Road 163 with the line 5 for Perth South to the south of the intersection. Stop controls at this intersection are on Perth Road 163. And typically, when you have a short built-up area there with a stop control, generally, you don't see a speed zone. However, looking at villages in the area or close by, and in particular, I've given you examples of Fullerton and Russell Dale, you will see short 60-kilometer-hour speed zones in those villages leading up to a stop sign. So I think the big thing here is the big thing here is I like to be consistent in our signing and certainly our traffic operations here around the county and in keeping with the Ontario Traffic Manual. You know, province wide. So I think it makes sense to, to, to update our speed zone here and provide signage and 200 meter 60 kilometer speed zone in the village of Rannick. Any questions?
Ron?
Well, since this was resident asked for, do they pay for the speed signs or does the county?
The county would pay for the speed signs in this case. The only criteria that we've made residents pay for signs is typically if it's like a church or something that want to post a directional signage on, on the roadway and/or the, the engine brake signs are the other, is the other one that we would make residents or, or area rate payers pay for.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Not seeing this section means more of a safety issue than anything. So I would, I assumed all along the county would be looking after this. Anyway, thanks, John. So I have a resolution. The county council receives the Rannick Speed Limit Public Work Road slash 2020 Report. And that council approves the 60 kilometer per hour speed zone on Perth Road 163 in the village of Rannick. And further, that Schedule B of Bylaw 2674 is amended to include 200 meter long speed zone on Perth Road 163 in the village of Rannick. Moved by Bob Wilhelm, second by Daryl Hurley. Those in favor? Carrie? Okay. Moving on. Council reports. John, you're done? You guys got anything else?
Yeah, I, I, if you have time, Jim, I have a question for, for John. And I, I'm not trying to throw him under the bus or anything. I don't know whether he's got an update. Came up at our meeting Monday night in our West Perth Council meeting. There was an inquiry as to where we're at with the intersection in Barnholm. And I don't know if you have any further information on that or not. We said we would ask you today. And, and I know the OPP are involved, MTO and the county as well. So I don't know whether you have anything further to add or not.
After you, Warden Herson, I, I did, so the, the MTO did receive my letter. And we did get a response, I think. Counselor McKenzie and the warden and the CAO were included in, in the response. And the MTO is looking at this. They were doing some studies in, within the month of May and they expected to follow that up with the report. I have not heard back from them and will certainly follow up, but they did provide a contact who'd be sort of the lead on this. And it was the same individual who was the lead on the Russell Dale investigation. So they were, he was excellent to work with and, and I expect that as soon as they have anything ready, they'll be, they'll be back to us, but I will reach out and just so that I can follow up with that and update council.
Thanks, John. So it just further to that, when I heard of that bad accent, there wasn't a week or two ago. First, I assumed it was that corner, but apparently it was further up the road west of that. That guy was charged this last day or two. And unfortunately, there was an individual, I believe, from North Perth killed in that accident.
Yes, unfortunately, that was at the intersection of right at the bound, here on boundary there of Perth Line 44 and Perth Road 180. And yeah, we have four foot stop signs, rumble strips on, on Perth Road 180 there. And apparently the individual did not stop.
Okay, any questions for John? Anything else? Okay, now we're moving on. So we have a council report. And on this, we have a resolution that Counselor Hurlick wanted to put forward. So I'll let Counselor Hurlick speak to this to start with.
Great, Derek. Thanks. Now, just watching the shenanigans of the last couple of weeks, it's very frustrating. What we're all going through. Especially at the government, they insist that they can't open government at the beginning of the week. It's far too dangerous in the end of the week. And it's frustrating just to see all this going on. They, they make it clear, nobody will be charged, nobody will be fined. People are messing with their faces half with masks, half without masks. And here we are struggling and spending money continuously to try and cope with this problem. And then just spinning and posting, spinning and posting double standards clearly rampant. It's frustrating. So I, I had to reach out, I had to do something and this is learning and I worked together and should be said and we put this together. So here it is. And yeah, I, I believe we need to share this forward with our local levels. This needs to stop and we should go forward.
Okay, any comments from other counselors? Don't everybody speak at once. Todd?
Sorry, it was a bit difficult at my end to hear Daryl's comments. I apologize. I, I think I got the gist of, of what that was about. My big question is, what is the outcome that you're seeking here, Daryl? I'm, I'm curious to understand. I mean, I certainly see that you'd like the governments to sort of march to the beat of the same drummer, and I think that's what this is about. But certainly we have, you know, a fairly fragmented system. I think we can acknowledge that. Across Canada, we have, you know, varying standards and, and differences of, of even recommendations around physical distancing. And even across Ontario, from, from public health unit to public health unit area, we're seeing different actions. Perhaps the most interesting of which is the, the action in Wellington with the requirement for face masks to be worn in commercial environments. So you know, my, my take, and I, I have no concern about letting other levels of government know that we think there needs to be a coherent message. But is there another outcome that you're seeking from this that, that I'm, I'm perhaps missing at this point?
You were correct. No, you're right. And it has changed since. So yeah, the outcome I would like to see is just it's a little frustrating and it could go straight along. There's supposed to be no movement anywhere. The bare minimal. Can you hear me there? All right, Lori?
You're, you're in and out a bit.
And my phone.
Any other comments or questions? So I do have a resolution here. We'll see if it has any support. Oh, Todd, sorry?
Just as a, you know, sort of as a point of information, and again, it speaks perhaps to Daryl's concern. But it's, it's an interesting point. The only place in the regulations wherein two meters of distance is, is enforceable is, from what we can tell is with the new regulations related to church gatherings and sort of weddings, funerals, that kind of thing. That's the only place in, in the regulations where the province has stipulated that two, two meters of distance is enforceable. The rest is actually a recommendation. So there isn't a strict requirement to maintain two meters of distance, although it is at this point largely the right thing to do. And that's from comments that I received yesterday from Miriam when I asked questions about this. So it's important for us to understand that, that even some of the things that we've assumed are, are dogma in all of this. Some are regulations, some aren't. So it, it does speak to your point, Daryl, that there's this sort of fragmented set of messages and, and I think the biggest challenge will be to try to figure out how we get all the, the recommendations from even local health units aligned or otherwise. I mean, I heard Counselor Ives' comments earlier about traveling to, to Wellington County and, and the difference he's, he's experiencing in his business as a consequence of that. And that certainly is interesting. So there's a, there's a challenge and, and certainly clarification of, of messages would be helpful.
I think it's kind of like when the province shuts everything down and then they announce that patios can open. Some people thought you could just build a patio on the sidewalk and have a bar. They didn't realize you still had to go through the municipality. Like the pools can open. I think North Perth isn't going to open their pool. I'm not speaking for Todd, but that's what I heard. He shakes his head. We're going to open our pool. So then they allow each end of, you're afraid fragmented. West Perth can open their pool. How many people are going to come from North Perth? None, because we're going to have it that you have to be a West Perth resident. But I run that service Ontario and, and Kitchener people are rushing out on Saturday mornings because we're the only one open. And it never dawned on me till the end of the day Thursday that people would drive an hour, an hour and a half. The one girl's address was Grimsby. She needed a, a license plate. She can't get it anywhere. I'm thinking, so now we're thinking that we might have to do our service in Ontario too. Just Perth County residents, because I never dreamt people would drop, but as we open beaches and pools and that, the city people that want to get away on the weekend, but the government never says, stay in your own area. They just say, it's open, go ahead. So I know what you're talking about, Daryl, that you're worried about fragment. There's no clear, clear and concise message. It's kind of like, go ahead and do it if you want to. It's like a bylaw that you don't enforce.
You might want to check with the ministry, Doug. I'm not sure you can deny service in a service. Check that out.
I highly doubt we can, but I know we, we were lined up 12 deep on Saturday. And we're the only one in Perth County that's open on Saturday. We're the only one in Huron County that's open on Saturday. There's, there's none in Waterloo or anywhere. And I did not realize that we're the only center that I could find that's open Saturday morning. So it just, just caught me off guard that people would, would travel that far just to get a license plate, because I guess they can't get it during the week.
Well, further to your comment, Perth South's been issuing marriage licenses for people as far away as Toronto and Niagara. Our clerks went in the office. So they're kind of out to get their marriage certificates or license because they can't get it anywhere else. And the ones that show they had on their weddings, they're in there. But they've come to Perth Southern. They're getting, we have people from in around the area of Toronto come. Like all that was done online and everything until the very last second. There, we were the only one of the few that were issuing them. Anyway, any other comments? Not seeing any. I have a resolution here and we'll see where it goes. The council correspond with the provincial and federal representatives regarding a turn the efforts to slow the spread of COVID-19 since March 2020 are jeopardized by recent increases in public gatherings. And the council requests the province and federal representatives to clarify and communicate messaging to the public pertaining to the guidelines and expectations of all Canadians and Canadians for physical distancing and public gatherings as efforts to continue the slow, to slow the spread of COVID-19. Is there anyone wanting to move or second that? Daryl's going to move it? You, you're going to second that? Okay, any further comments before I call a vote? Those in favor? She's carried. Thank you. So now we're going ahead to bylaws. We have bylaw 3764 2020. Be read a first, second and third time and finally pass this 18th of June 2020. And that is with regards to the speed limits in Rannick. Moved by Bob Wilhelm, second by you, McDermott. Those in favor? That would be carried. Other business? Oh, we have no notice. Do we have any notice of motions? Nope. Other business, we have the we're going to put that piece of paper now. Oh, here it is, right here. We have, where, so we need a, a motion to approve what we did in closed session. So whereas Section 52.3 of the Health Protection and Promotion Act provides that a board of health may acquire and hold real property for the purpose of carrying out the functions of the board and Section 52.4 of the Health Protection and Promotion Act provides that subsection three does not apply unless the Board of Health has first obtained the consent of the councils of the majority of municipalities within the healthiness served by the Board of the Health Unit. And whereas Board of Health for the Urin Perth Health Unit requests consent to acquire the real property municipally known as the Health and Libraries Complex at 77722B London Road, Clinton, Ontario, from the Corporation of the County of Urin, pursuant to the agreement and purchase and sale from the County of Perth. Now therefore, it is all that pursuant to Section 52 bracket four of the Health Protection and Promotion Act, Perth County Council hereby grants consent to the Board of Health for the Urin Health, Urin Perth Health Unit to acquire the real property municipally known as the Health and Library Complex at 77722B London Road, Clinton, Ontario, from the Corporation of the County of Urin. Moved by Todd, second by Bob Wilhelm. Those in favor? Gary? Announcements? Anybody have any announcements up there, Todd?
Well, County Council and those who are watching, Atwood again becomes the home of Canada Day in Perth County in a very unusual year. So it's my pleasure to welcome everyone to our Canada Day 2020, a virtual celebration. There's been a lot of collaboration this year. The Lions, of course, are involved from Atwood, but as well, we see involvement from the programmers and individuals in recreation departments in all of the lower tier municipalities of Perth County. We're putting together a festival that is very unusual, that's for sure. But certainly we'd like to welcome everyone to participate in, in the ways they can. There will be more information on each municipality's website about this. Certainly, the North Perth website has a dedicated page with resources for the variety of activities that will occur. I particularly challenged my county councillor colleagues to participate in, in what we're hoping will be a pretty remarkable event called the Craft Float Parade. As we know, the regulations from Ontario prohibit us from having parades at this time. So we're going to do something completely virtual and our approach is to have small boxes, either tissue boxes or shoe boxes decorated for Canada Day for the occasion. So I challenged my fellow mayors and other county councillors to participate in the craft float parade, which will be broadcast through YouTube or other channels on July 1st. My, my float is well underway, colleagues, so I, I hope that you'll rise to the occasion and, and give me a, a better run at craft skills than I personally have. But beyond that, we'd love to have your participation in a wonderful set of events that are being sponsored and managed by, as I said, staff from our own teams in our municipalities and from the Atwood Lions and Mitchell Rotary, I believe, is also involved. So please join us on, on Canada Day and the lead up to Canada Day. We all need something to celebrate through what has proven to be a difficult and frustrating season. And this is an opportunity to do something a little different, a little wild, mind you. But certainly something that should bring a lot of fun to a day that is usually quite packed with great activities coming out of Atwood. Thank you.
Any other announcements from councillors up there? Not see any. Just to confirm, everybody got the press release with regards to the funding for broadband yesterday? From Randy. Uh, from Randy, and then subsequently last night, Swift announced the uh. Going ahead for the phase three for Perth County to do the RFPs, which we can now legally talk about. Uh, and actually, Daryl, maybe we can get one down your neck of the woods, because your internet seems to be the worst. When we're doing these meetings. Uh, we'll see what we can do, you guys, the co-op's gotta put a higher silo up for you. Anyway, um, I don't think I have any other announcements. Um, I did get my video done for Canada Day for you, Todd. I think Mayor Robert Wilhelm has to do one yet. He was told on Tuesday night that that had to be done. Uh, I'm not sure if Rhonda has or Walter done one yet, but probably.
Mine's, mine's done and in.
Walter, you got yours done?
Not yet, I've been too busy uh, uh, doing what they call hang.
Yeah, it's actually uh, been quite the weather for getting that job done, we finished about a week and a half ago. Anyway, uh, nothing else then, uh, confirmatory bylaw three, seven, six, five, two thousand and twenty. Being a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of council of the Corporation of the County of Perth. And its regular meeting held June eighteenth, two thousand and twenty is read a first, second and third time. And finally passed on June eighteenth, two thousand and twenty, moved by Doug Cullum, second by Walter McKenzie. Those in favor? Gary, and I have a motion here that county council be adjourned. At nine fifty two, moved by. Bob Wilhelm, second by you, McDermott, those in favor? Gary, thank you very much, and everybody stay safe, and just so you know, Todd, uh, the staff tell me we're gonna have a float. For your parade and we're gonna win.
Yep.
Anyway, thank you very much, folks, and uh, stay safe.